Not take away a penny from the school for reiterating laws that it already must abide by. And that's why this is a revolution. We are not changing absolutely one hair on the body of exist-
It's more like, but it's a concern. Because it wouldn't be the first time that maybe we have lost money for something. So that is a concern. And as a board member, as a board member, considering the amount of money that we rely on. As you could see, I know I meant to. Right. When you see, when you see how dependent this district is, and we know going forward with the way everything's happened federally with our new education secretary, we need to really be cautious. I'm not saying, I'm not against a committee. I am not against a committee, absolutely not. But I'm telling you that my, this, this is really my only concern. Is, is, is the, is the money, because this is the money that we're using for everybody here. And, and I have complete compassion, and I'm very concerned about this whole situation too. So as far as committee forming, I agree. But this, and I'm telling the board members, this is something we have to think about because we've heard from the governor. The governor previously, that's why we were with, that's why we had to cancel our meeting last week. Because we kept hearing from the governor, I'm sure many of you in the audience heard, the governor wanted to give $7,000 per student. It didn't matter your income level, it didn't matter your language skills, it didn't matter about anything, alright? And we would have suffered tremendously. That is the direction that our governor is going in. And then we have, so if he finds ways, if he finds ways of being vindictive, I have no doubts that that's what he's gonna do. You know, but I absolutely support a committee. That's, I can absolutely support it. But this would be the concern, because if we have anything taken away, then what was the point if we're, if we can learn something from the committee without doing the resolution, and we can make sure that all of this staff knows exactly how to handle it. And exactly, and exactly, because we want to protect the children.
I just want to clarify, the point of the resolution is education and also a show of solidarity to the community. So the resolution, education is key. And I'd also like to clarify that while the governor is, is the governor, he's also a lawyer, and he must also abide by the law. And the law requires that the, sorry, I'm just gonna make her, uh, sorry.
Well, sometimes-
Just distracted me for a second.
But see, sometimes all of a sudden, there'll be something that we have in a line-
That's the end of it.
And it disappears.
So if our concern is the budget instead of the safety of our students, I'd like to warn this-
That's not what she said.
I like, I like to say that.
I'd like to warn this board that we have more to fear-
Mr. Ruiz, that's not what she said. That is not what she says. I'm gonna have to stop you.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's not what she said.
What I'm saying is that if our board is concerned, if I am concerned, or anyone is concerned about money, then we need to be more concerned about a lawsuit should any of us violate the law and, and discriminate, or even inadvertently violate the rights of an immigrant student.
If I could just add something, just, just to calm the situation down. If you, if any, and in the audience, you can follow along. The budget that we just passed, I'll just admit, is $44 million, 897. The local taxes paid by those people living here in Dover is only $14 million, 246. If we lose any blind item, which we can, they have done this in the past. Mrs. Laurie is speaking from 17 years of experience of creating, she's been our budget chairman for 17 years, so she is fully aware of the tricks that can be played by those people who pull the strings of our budget. So she's not just saying something. If we lose any of that money, it goes on the very backs of the people that she wants to protect. It goes on the tax pay. It goes on the rent that those people pay, on the mortgage that those people pay. Are you willing to do that?
I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help this board affirm the responsibilities that we have-
And we, we do.
By creating the committee-
I just asked-
For all these concerns.
Explore the concerns, but did I just ask Mr. Becker, do we have mechanisms in place for situations that you described? His answer was yes. Mr. Becker runs the school district by the authority of this board, and that's what we just asked him. If he does that, we must trust that he does.
But the only, the only issue right now is that there's a motion-
Is making the committee.
That's the one that should be approved.
Correct. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of why we're concerned with this. We would love to be able to just toss things out. We're not that school district because we heavily, heavily rely, it is our lifeblood to rely on state and federal funding. Just the smallest change in Title I federal funding-
Right, which-
Is a huge impact of loss of teachers. We lose teachers. How many teachers are we losing this year?
Which is, were at 50% of last year-
Right.
For Title I. So that already puts us down.
That's federal funds.
That already puts us, we have a cut of two point, of $2,288,000 for another, another Fund 12. So we have things that are coming at us, and we need to have the compassion and the committee, fine, we make sure that everybody is-
Every mechanism is in place.
Maybe Mr. Becker, maybe Mr. Becker will want to, to have meetings with his, his administrators, and make sure that the administrators speak, speak to the teachers, and make sure everybody's aware, make sure the custodians, everybody in this district. And if we can be satisfied, and if, and if that's what he thinks would be the best, if we're agreeing with it, and that's where we go with it, then we have addressed, we have addressed these needs.
Ms. Laurie, given your expertise in the budget, I think your, that expertise on this committee, should we make it, would be a wonderful addition. So between Mr. Miller, yourself, and I volunteered to be on the committee, I think we could, we could get to the, to the task of this.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, because I am concerned. I am very concerned. I don't like this climate, I don't like to think that a child is not gonna have their parent. I don't like that. I'm very concerned about it.
These are our students.
So it's not, this is not something, you know, that I'm just, that I take lightly at all, not at all. So, so that's why I agree to the, I agree to the agreement.
Alright, let's, let's move to the next question.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
The superintendent would like to say something.
Yes.
I think if I could point out, I, I think the intent is good. What can we do? What aren't we doing? Can we do it better? Political statements is something the board has to decide on, whether it's a concern with the political statement or an actual action plan that will help the students. But in terms of the fluidity of the situation right now, you know, you hear a lot all the time, you hear a lot, well, you know, this school should be choice, it shouldn't be choice, we should let people go, we shouldn't let them go. And somehow, within the diatribe of all the conversation, we have to look at some of the realities, because we're in a time like never before in our history. Today, this came out from, from Washington. This is the proposed education budget. They are cutting $9 billion from the education budget. They're investing $1.4 billion in choice school programs, enabling children to go to whatever district they choose. Sounds very good until you consider, okay, well, who are these choice districts taking? Are they taking the student with learning disabilities? Are they taking the student who has to assimilate into our culture in English, and then maybe from another country? Which is usually the answer is no, they don't. So I think the concern we have here is it's a very fluid time, and you know, the funding is a concern. It's a realistic, your, your concerns are valid, Ms. Laurie, because I don't know what the impact of losing, what we pay our Title I teachers for, I don't know what percentage that we're gonna lose. Is it the 13%? Is it more? And what we never heard when they said the education was gonna be relatively stable was the additional $1.4 billion that went to standard school funding, and is now being shifted to the political statement of choice schools. So I, I think these are all valid things to take in mind for the committee to investigate and decide what, how can we translate all the concerns and ideas into action? It will benefit the students while preserving their privacy. In terms of protecting them, in my mind, they're protected under the memorandum of agreement with the Attorney General. And I can tell you, we, we take that very much to heart.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Becker, how much of our money is federal money? Um, let's see, maybe, yeah, the- Okay, because right now, right now, the Education Commissioner is, is proposing, and the way the federal government wants to go, is to convert all federal funding into block grants to the state, all based on voucher programs. So the federal government is actively seeking to remove all the state funding that goes out to local districts. New Jersey School Boards, as well as most of the school boards in the country, is fighting that. But as we know, the Education Commissioner is not a proponent of public schools at all. So I, I, I think you should safely say that. The federal government's push is to eventually eliminate public schools. Or at least take a school of the last resort.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes. No, don't disturb her.
I just want to make sure that I understand your concern, because I'm not sure. Is your concern that if we were to move forward with the proposal, that then the state funding, like, punitively would be cut?
Yes.
That, that's what, that's what your concern is?
Yes.
And that these, that can't happen.
Well, it has, it has happened, well-
Not with regard to immigration.
No, we don't have that.
But we, but we'll, but-
But there are ways that they can do it.
They can take something away and say something else, when you know.
Newark and Cleveland already passed this, and they have more state and federal funding than we do.
Well, let's just leave that-
I think I would say there's always, there's always a chance of reg, reg, because we've seen it in the past, for whatever the issue is. Being with someone, someplace.
You need a committee, guys. You need a committee.
We'll just, we'll discuss that.
I think we got that motion signed.
Okay, we have the motion second. Okay.
You need a committee.
If no one else has any other questions, roll call.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
I just thought your board process would be appointment of the committee, I assume is the board president.
Yes, yes.
I think you've already had people here.
I have some volunteers. Yes, I see that I have some volunteers. So, Ms. Ruiz, would you like to be chair of the committee?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Miller, would you like to be a part of the committee?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Laurie, would you like to be part of the committee?
Yes.
Yes, and I would be an advocate on the committee as an alternate. Very good. Okay. That was the last item under new business. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, now we're going to you, to the very patient public, who is still sitting here with us, thank you very much.
We're standing.
We're standing, yes, we're standing.
You can stretch it.
Again, this is your part of the meeting, where you can make public comment. It would be three minutes, if you could stand, state your name and address, and you will allow us to go on for 30 minutes. So, who's ever first? Yep, my signal first, number seven.
Good evening, my name is-
I just wanted to also, I just wanted to also say, when it gets to the one-minute warning, I'm gonna go first.
So, my name is Mine Hobson, I'm Blackett County. I am happy to be here tonight. I am a Mine Hill resident and a parent of a Mine Hill student. And I just want to say, first of all, I apologize, and I'm a little bit embarrassed by the fact that my Mine Hill representatives are here. It's a little bit embarrassing, I hope that you conduct your business, and some of what you've conducted tonight has been very fascinating, so I commend you on that. I apologize on behalf of my town and my school district for the lack of representation. I, I also want to just say thank you, this wasn't a part of my remarks, but I just want to say thank you to the Mine Hill committee for reporting out to your public in the level of detail that you did, because you shared more about the conversations that you had and the deliberations with my board than I did, as a member of the public, in those public meetings that some of you were there. So, thank you. I learned a little bit about what happened in those meetings, and I'm glad I learned it somewhere. So I'm just here really because I just want to say, as, as, not only as a parent, but as a lifelong resident of Morris County, I was educated both in my elementary and secondary education here in the county. I came out of Parsipian Hills, but I'm a county, I'm educated out of Morris County. And I know, having lived here my whole life, that there isn't a bad school in Morris County. We are fortunate in this county, and I, so as a result of that, having moved, lived in Mine Hill for a little bit more than a decade now, I have been saddened by the continual perpetuation of this negative, unfounded stereotype, generalization, and the negative about Dover. In every conversation that I've had, I've always defended it, just because I know people who have been, have made great things out of themselves, have become engineers, lawyers, doctors, out of, out of Dover High School. So I just commend you on that. I was very much looking forward to my child attending Dover. I'm here really just to ask you that, please, please, to do your part to end the perpetuation of those unfounded negative stereotypes. And I think what you can do best to end that perpetuation is by actively opposing the petition when it gets to you, when it's your time. Please, please, the students, my child is your student, will be your student in high school, even if she's not in second and third. And they cannot, I, I, we have great teachers, we have a great, phenomenal elementary program. We are not equipped for the middle school program, and those children are gonna come to you in high school, unequipped, and I don't want my child to be one of those children. I'm so impressed by your facilities, impressed by everything that you're doing here, and it made me more attentive tonight, made me even more enthusiastic about wanting to be a part of this one community. So I'm just, the seat to you, please do your part. I want to commend your superintendent for the public outcry that he gave in response to the unfortunate incident that happened involving Jefferson students. I think, given that, I hope the Department of Ed is paying attention. I hope that, you know, you will do what you can to accept us, because I think the racial and ethnic balance here, it's really important that we participate. That's my signal.
That's your signal. That's your signal. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Who's next? Yes.
I'm, I'm blessed. How are you all?
I'm good, how are you?
I enjoyed, very good. I enjoyed the conversation this evening, the dialogue this evening. I like to see this kind of thing going on in the board meeting. But once again, I am also, to follow on Ms. Hobson's comments, I have a tremendous concern that Mine Hill has taken a vote to go ahead and file a petition. And I implore you, I mean, I really implore you, from an educational perspective, from a financial perspective, from an ethical perspective, to, to oppose the Mine Hill Board of Education and their attempt to remove the students in September. I, I want to also talk a little bit about that 20-day period, because once that petition is filed, this board is gonna have a relatively short period of time within which they have to file an opposition to that petition, or, and I'm saying this, I guess for everyone's information, what will happen is the petition will go to the Department of Education, and then to the Office of Administrative Law. And if we don't, if Dover doesn't oppose the petition, everything that is in that petition will be accepted by the ALJ as being accurate, and we all know it's not accurate. We know the figures aren't accurate. It is not an accurate petition. So as an initial step, I think that it's, it's board's moral obligation to oppose the petition. You always have an opportunity. Once you file your response, after that 20 days, you file your response, and you go ahead and you say, we oppose this, we deny that these things are accurate, there's still an opportunity for settlement and negotiations all the way through the process of the ALJ making a determination. So you don't give up your opportunity to continue to dialogue if you oppose the petition, but I think the petition has got to be opposed. And when we look at money, I guess my last question is, there's currently, I don't know whether it's $600,000 booked for next year, but it's probably got to be close to $600,000 on the tuition that we would receive from Mine Hill for next year. And I want to know, is that, do we have that in the budget as a revenue for Mine Hill? Or did we remove that from the budget as a revenue for Mine Hill? And I'd like the answer to that one, kind of, tonight if you could.
Okay. Very good, under your three minutes.
I'm, I'm working on it, man. I am telling you. I'm from Jersey City, I can even talk faster than that, but it kind of gets the people in Morris County a little.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes.
Krista Sager, 16 Green, Waterville. You mentioned summer reading earlier, and the opportunity for many of our students to participate in such a program. As you know, I have two students, I have an eighth grader and a fourth grader, and in their combined 13 years in the district, they have had no opportunity to participate in a school-sponsored summer reading program. Can you either by percentage or a number, tell me what percentage of our students participate in a summer reading program? Because I think it would be beneficial for all of our students to have access to that two months, we all know about the summer slide, and so giving access to our students over those two months, I think would be critical.
We can answer once everyone's finished. Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Yes?
Mary, good evening, Cheryl Colligan, the French teacher at the middle school. And I just want to share some more news with you. Lastly, we spoke about the play, and the children did a fabulous job. Regrettably, we did have a snow event. So, as a teacher coming to these meetings, I was approached by some students as well as some parents, if the board would consider a snow date in next year's calendar, specifically for the play performance. Also, I want to bring your attention to our wellness committee, which is perhaps not well-known, and that is chaired by our phys ed teacher, Justin Hartman. They are providing avenues after school for the children to have safe play, as well as interaction amongst the grade levels, in between grade levels, and teachers. So at the end of last week of February, they had a basketball game, they had hundreds of kids attend. Staff played with the kids, they went, again, across grade levels. And the children also, I want to report to you, that they raised $400 for the 11th-hour rescue, which is the equivalent of the dog and cat rescue group.
Shelter.
Shelter, thank you, that was the word. So they're very, very proud of their efforts. So again, it was chaired by Justin Hartman. If I could just mention the teachers that are on that committee that have organized this and continue to organize more things. Lauren Gallagher, our teacher, Maida Pearson, phys ed. Cliff Owen, phys ed. Brian Keltner, who's also phys ed. Rosemary Smith, who is our nurse, and again, Justin Hartman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Right beside you.
Yarison Williams, Town West Cooper Street, Dover alumni. So based on what I, the information that I received from the discussion today, as well as the parents, and being an engineer by trade, it sounds like the whole incident with Mine Hill are not being, the decisions are not being made based on data. There are a lot of speculation, there's some inaccurate information being presented. So taking that particular example, I would encourage the board to learn from this particular situation, and welcome any type of data or feedback that is presented, so that we can make more accurate decisions. With that, I would like to also recommend that we collect some more information in our data, which is all military program, and so perhaps that could be provided to the, to the public or the parents. But the reason why I'm here is because I asked this question following the incident with the Jefferson event, and I still have not received an answer in terms of what came out of the particular discussions of that incident, such as a student protection policy in sports. Should this, should an event like this have a situation or an incident like that, what are the coaches, refs, students, and/or parents present at that particular game are supposed to do? Do we have a plan in place that they're supposed to execute? And I have yet to hear either a response or see a policy in place that I could review and perhaps, you know, familiarize myself with. Also, I'm happy to hear that we have some funding for some test prep through our K-6 grade. And among those lines, I want to ask the question, have any consideration been given to SAT prep, to all those students that want to take advantage of such opportunity? If there is, I'd be more than happy to see, I would like to see what the percentage of enrollment is, and what the success rate is. I'm hearing a lot of great, 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 great results from both our elementary and middle school, but I've yet to hear some glories about SAT preps and SAT scores, and therefore some data and results. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I have a few words to say. I'm Mine Hill resident. I currently have a sophomore here in high school, and I have a sixth grader in Mine Hill. I do not want to see Mine Hill in trouble. I've seen all the good things that these schools do. I've won by a gifted and talented program in middle school, so they could have my other son have the same opportunity. Mine Hill's not gonna have that in place with South Hill. Definitely not. My son, older son, he's an honor student, straight A student here in high school. He couldn't be happier here at this high school. I know my younger son is looking forward to coming here because he said he wants to meet new people. He doesn't want to be the same small circle all the time. He wants to- That's coming from the left.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
Angela Ramos for 326 Washington Avenue. I was here, this Christopher. As you remember, I was here in November, last year in November, and Mr. Becker was so nice and kind, taking my call the next day, and so we have a conversation about my questions and everything. Thank you so much. I wanted to say thank you, and I'm sorry that I wasn't here before to say thank you. And just, I have a, I just spoke with Mrs. Clarence, the principal from this Dover, followed our conversation, and I, they, they figured out a way to fix the schedule and everything, but as I told her, how sad it was to have, for, for everything, having me here to fix the schedule, when the schedule should be fixed before the school year, before the school year begins, because we are having this problem two years ago before too. So I explained to her, so just I want to say thank you for your time to take me. Also, I, I asked her, sometimes, I, I'm not usually in the school, but sometimes when I'm in the school, what I can see is a lack of supervision outside in the grounds, by the time of the dismissal bus and everything. I offered myself as a volunteer to just come over and just check if the children are taking the bus, or just if they are no, having any issues outside in the playground while they are waiting for their parents. So she said, I should speak maybe with you, if you can just like, I don't know how to do like the resolution, something to ask parents, if they can volunteer or do something about just coming over and, and check about these childrens and everything. And I'm just saying about what Mrs. Ruiz speak about the revenge of the school, something to say, correct? As Mr. Becker say, I think the school is being working really good with this kind of childrens, when we have problems with the childrens. I mean, me as a parent, I would be worried, what will happen with my child if I get incarcerated? Maybe not because illegal, illegal problems, maybe just legal problems with the, with the law, you know, but just, I, I know he's being handled really good, because being, I've been in different towns, in different districts before, so I think Dover School District has handled immigration things really well. And talk to it as nothing personal, and I just think, I will really be worried about the budget, because my son, as my son being in a special education, my budget is, is my worries, it's really my worries. If something like the, like the motion you, you explained, will take something from me.
Thank you for coming. I'm, I was just saying earlier. Anyone else?
Yeah, anyone else?
Yes.
So, I mean, I really, I guess we don't see a big difference in the, in the, I think about, I think, I, I feel like, I feel like, I feel like, we, we, we really do deserve, as, we need to, as, we, 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 we,
is here tonight, that we had for generations, generations and generations, that summer reading program. It was very rigorous, every grade level. And the problem was, when Mrs. Lori and I were very new to the board, it may have been our first years on board, so we're talking 17 years ago, we had a huge outcry from parents and then administration on top of that, but mostly parents who did not want the summer reading program. And that's the only reason why it stopped, was because of the outcry of summer reading program from the parents, that it was almost punitive. And let me explain why. For most of you who probably, if you have not, what?
I'm just pointing to my.
Oh, yes.
My experience.
Doctor saying, if your students, if your children, your own children have never done summer reading program through the school, they work really hard all summer. That's what it's supposed to be. You're given your books that you're supposed to read, you're supposed to work all summer long, you're supposed to do the work normally with some students, that's how they do it. They plan it out and they do it that way. The majority of the parents that we were hearing from were the parents who were on their vacation in August, riddled with, and Mr. Franks is shaking his head, riddled with the project that they had to bring with them to do the last two weeks of summer vacation. It was frantic, it was causing heartache, it was causing fears. And then we also had the students who would show up the first week of school and not have their project at all, their summer reading project at all. And they would start out the school year with zero. That's how they would start out. There was also some issue, if I remember correctly, with the student who was, let's say, going from East Dover in the sixth grade to the middle school in the seventh grade. And after doing all of that work and whatnot, the seventh grade teacher said, well, I have no means of correcting this. Thanks for doing all that work, but you didn't need to do that. So we didn't just stop the program because we don't want to educate kids in the summer. We want to see them slip, the summer slip. Because that's.
It's not even that. It's the parents, even if the kids did the work. And the problem that happened was they would fill out this paperwork. They would come the first week of school and have to take a test. The problem is that some of the children without having, without having the instruction from, from the, from a teacher, okay? Some of them just didn't understand it. Now, I know you had my daughter. My daughter would just come along and just be fine. But then there were other kids that would come along, all right, and they didn't understand it. Okay? So now you're starting, you're starting your year off with, you've got a C or a D on your first project. All right? That did not sit well with anybody. It doesn't stop anybody from reading in the summer. They can certainly read.
But we did have, we're not going to take any more questions from the public. I'm just giving you some background of the information. And I know that there is, there's discussion on, is it good? Is it bad? There's always back and forth with this, but that's the reason why this board made that decision, which is to not make an arbitrary decision just to take away from the summer enrichment of students. That's not our goal. That's why that decision was made years ago. Now, with this being an issue that parents were bringing to us, that they want the summer program back, the summer reading program back, this is something that the board will discuss, and we can bring it to Mr. Becker, and they can discuss it with the administration, and we'll make a plan.
We data, right? We data? We data? Your data available to make this type of decisions, right?
We're not going to take any more comments from the public, but thank you very much. But yes, of course, with informed data. That's how we make our decisions, with informed data. And we'll turn it to Mr. Becker, and that's how the board makes decisions on what we're going to. In fact, when we made that decision, there was regret from the superintendent. They did not want to stop the summer program, but the board had to listen to the public. That's who we work for. We work for the public.
It was just too many.
Can I just take a short? Okay. Thanks.
It was just too many. It was just too many children.
And it was not once. It was.
Yeah. This went on for quite a while. And it was the evaluation process, and then you have things, do you do the evaluation? All right? But then they're not going to read it. If they know they're not going to have to be evaluated, they're not going to read.
We tried to alter it.
Or some of them are going to read.
We tried to alter it several different ways to try and make it work, and it just, the end result was it hadn't. Thank you for coming, ladies. So just to answer your question, it was just not something, I was shocked to hear that, well, the board doesn't want summer reading anymore, support summer reading. That is not at all what happened then. I just want to make that clarification. Mr. Becker, did you have anything that you wanted to respond to?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we could certainly get the data audit, and we'll get it from the students involved. I think summer reading, different things to different people. Well, we do that with the summer school programs for a lot of the kids who've been identified at need. Handing them a book for the summer and saying, go home and read it, isn't going to help students who have a lot of the challenges. So we can try to provide them more structure. We have point of entry programs for our new students where they get a vocabulary and they begin to learn the developing process. But what I don't have are numbers, and I don't have the Kindle numbers, so I'll get that together for you, because I think, as long as I understand, I'm looking at summer reading as all the different programs that might be fostering academics. So Doctor Sander, I'll be glad to get the approximate number. Is it every student in the district? No. Would it be your daughters? Probably not. You know, this is looking at students who need the developmental. We did go through several years, we had a lot of enrichment programs during the summer. In fact, the vast majority of our elementary teachers were employed in the morning to do the enrichment program or their remedial program, and in the afternoon, they went ahead and had professional development, which they were also paid for. And I think you were a member of the staff at that time. But unfortunately, you know, the money, it does cost money. And I don't, you get teachers who say, if you want me to come for an extra half day, you should offer to pay me for these reading instructions. So it is a challenge, but I'll be glad to give you the number. All the different programs together, because I would be guessing and that would be right, because I believe in data also. In terms of data, grade seven, there's a lot of discussion about Mine Hill, and as well there should be. Unfortunately, I.
Oh, they just.
The Loser Mine Hill group. One of the challenges we're having is that next year, the numbers are so viable, and before we give opinions, perhaps we need more data to base our decisions on. You may be interested in knowing that out of next year's grade, this year's grade six in Mine Hill, next year's grade seven, there are nine students committed to Dover. Nine. So when we talk about budgetary impacts, we talk about nine kids who are committed. We have 10 students who are on a waiting list for the choice schools of Mine Hill. So if a spot opens up in a choice school, those students will be going. We also have five students who've just signed their acceptance letter, their intent to attend from Mine Hill to one of the choice schools. So that means our universe is somewhere between nine and 19 that could possibly be coming. And what we don't know is how many of those 10 students that are conditionally accepted will be approved to go to the choice programs. Because with a choice program, they tend to revise the regulation constantly to fit the needs of the choice mandates. May be boring to you, but sort of what we live on right here, kind of how this runs. So that's something that we're trying to juggle, you know, constantly, because the board will have to make a decision in terms of what is the financial impact, and certainly a huge difference if nine come versus the 24, that's adding the five. The other question that was asked was, in the budget, how do we calculate this? What we did with the budget today, Mr. Spoonmaker, Mr. Dennis, for myself, we contested, we only wanted to have 19 students on our budget for next year. The 10 that are conditionally accepted, they may or may not be coming, and then the nine that are definitely coming. However, Mine Hill has insisted that all 24, even though five of them. Why does this matter to any of us? Because, you know, some people may say, well, you're getting more money, why are you complaining about it? Because then when they do the recapitulation, then several years from now, we'll have to pay back. And so that's always a big concern. We pay between $200,000 and $300,000 to Mine Hill every year for students who don't show because they're counting students who either have been accepted or may be accepted as coming to Dover. I thought more reasonable estimate would be the nine and then half of the other 10, so 13 students to count for budgetary reasons, but that was unsuccessful. So just gives you a little insight in terms of, as we're trying to juggle the data, how that data seems to be shifting constantly. Back in the day, when choice was started, choice was filling the extra seats in school classrooms. Now it's become a money-making proposition. A choice student, Mine Hill will get an additional $10,000 over the foundation aid for every choice student. If the state, and you know, I can understand, if you want your child to go to another school and they have a seat, maybe that's something that should be considered. But why should there be a bounty paid for that student going to another district? Do you know how much this amounts to across the state every year? $50 million. Now, in a time when we're scratching for every cent, and you see $50 million go out, where really, as far as I'm concerned, if you've been accepted and they have a seat available for you, well, that's fine. We should all have some choice in our lives. But if it turns into, translates into a money-making proposition, that really colors the whole thing, and that's how much this whole choice has changed over the years. I'm sorry, I tend to hear a little bit about this, but I just, as we're looking at ways that we're trying to cut back on our spending and still provide a full education to the children, I think this is totally, totally unconscionable. And as a matter of fact, I'm getting some help to put up my own little Facebook, maybe the voice of Bob Becker. Because what I'd like people to know is how much money is going for political connotation of choice schools. So maybe people don't know that. And if they do, maybe it's, hey, you want your child to go to a choice school? That's fine. But let's not put all the additional money on top. Why are we doing that? We should be more than politics. We should be about educating all our children. And as I say, very few choice schools accept special education by letting any student with great needs. So, you know, we recruit the students who are doing exceptionally well, which we're very proud of, of the students who have been recruited and accepted into like the Mars Nolz program. But I have to tell you, there's a little bit of angst on my part when these students doing so well are recruited and the parents are heavily marketed to, just like Mine Hill used to do when they would send every parent in Dover a letter. And that's sort of the challenge that we face with this whole situation. So we are concerned with the numbers, and before we make any decision, we need the data and how much it's going to impact this. I wish we had gained more support for this. I know Mr. Dennis was very frustrated also, as we're trying to project our budget, because if Mine Hill were to be accepted by the commissioner, and please keep in mind that what we mentioned earlier, you have $1.4 billion that the federal government is taking out of Title I and pushing into the choice programs to reward, encourage more students going to choice. What's going to happen then to the districts? It's a challenging outlook that we have ahead of us, and I think this is a time where people should stop the squabbling and get together and say, hey, wait a minute, you know, maybe this is just not right. So that'll be one of our first postings.
If I, I can be wrong.
I may even do a video, but I understand that it puts additional weight on you, so I don't need that.
I can be wrong, but in the past, some of the wonderful summer programs that we have that have been student and parent-based also, not just student-based, they come from Title I funds.
Oh, yes.
So we lose that, we lose that ability.
It's being reduced.
Quite a few, quite a few. Title I for class size reduction. So all these things are very crucial to a city. The board members, the budget committee especially, this isn't an academic discussion. This is something for months we've been trying to parse, parse out. I do hope everybody attends our budget meeting, because we'll go into a tremendous amount of detail for you that I think will be beneficial. But I am worried about our staff, and you know, can we maintain the numbers? Will the employment be there? We know we saw a cut in preschool. We're trying to juggle that around. So we're trying to address these things. Jefferson, there was a question about Jefferson. Today, I had the honor and privilege of meeting with a variety of people who are helping us. Because one of the concerns I have is the formation of hate speech, which takes many different flavors. You know, hate speech can be everything from isolating different identities or racial components to negative characterizations of anybody. So we did, we did meet with the, thank you, thank you. I had the initials. The Anti-Defamation League came in and met. Now, something that you may, because I'm hoping to develop a program so we can teach our children, you have this negativity on Twitter, on Facebook, on many of the organizations that are using the kids for their own purposes. So what we're working is, is how can we help our children to synthesize the information they're getting so they're just not swept up into these mainstream, negative, hate-based commentaries that are going on? So that's what we're doing on the local side. Another thing we're doing on the local side is working very closely with the NJISA. Did I get it right, finally?
No.
Are you working for us? But there is a conference this weekend in Atlantic, not weekend, this week in Atlantic City with all the athletic directors and that organization, I'm not going to say it. But they're actually meeting, and some of the workshop sessions are in terms of how can we restore a greater degree of character in our sports programs? Because there are a lot of things going on. We were assumed, but there were things going on within the whole matrix of the arena that have to be addressed. Because sports is supposed to be developing not only athletic ability, but a degree of citizenship. I don't think any of us would argue that what we saw was hardly a prime example of citizenship. But we're working, continue to work with many people. I haven't been very public about it and choose not to be. But we are working, it's a work in progress, to formulate a new set of rules and regulations that will actually be enforced. And this is what the athletic directors are actually working on now. And I do think it's very, very promising that many of the principals in Mars County, and principals tend to be the front line there, right, Mr. Franks?
Yes, sir.
Many of the principals are very, very positive about making changes, because they see the impact of the climate and how it's affecting their schools. So I think actually, we are going to make a real difference in the sports programs, not in terms of the athletics themselves, but in terms of restoring character, race and civility to the athletic arena, which I think is important. And it's not one school or one student. I think this is an endemic problem that we have to address. So I hope that answers somewhat about what's going on. The characterization, is that stopped? No, it hasn't. But when I read editorials that encourage students, you should be angry about this, well, what's the purpose of that? What are you trying to do? Are you trying to help us solve a problem? Are you trying to incite a degree of discontent? I'm very, very proud of the way our kids have managed it, and we closely work with them, and I think they understand that we support them. We support them 100%. And not only at the local level or Mars County, but up in New Jersey, as well as advocacy by several of the groups that I'm working with. So I hope that, it may not be all the answers you wanted, but I hope you get the flavor of the fact that this isn't something that we just rushed under a rug and continue with. We still continue on because it's just unacceptable.
I know, I know one of the things, Mr. Munoz, it is, one of the things he was asking was how were the coaches, refs, and parents directed? I don't know if you're able to speak on that.
I am.
I don't know if you're able to speak on that, when the event and what they should be doing.
Thank you very much. There's a new set of guidelines for coaches. We actually implement it here, and we see it being implemented more broadly across the county. And I understand, look, it's easy to take cheap shots of people, okay? It's easy to criticize a coach or somebody else in charge of an arena. I would imagine there are times when you just get so wrapped up in the game, you may not be cognizant. But what we have to do is make sure there's a greater awareness of all and develop programs to encourage the fans, you know, come up and make complaints, encourage the officials that if you get a complaint, you better act on it, you know? Don't just assume that it's, it's one fan or individual. And in terms of the coaches, they have to become more engaged with the game. And I'm not criticizing any coaches, but, you know, a greater level of awareness at times maybe have a special. And so those are the things that the, actually, the sports organization is working on, dispelled the program to try to answer all the questions that are going on. Is that that?
I think, I think that was everything you had. Oh, I was talking about SAT prep, which we have.
SAT prep, okay. I'm sorry, thank you very much. SAT prep has changed. The SAT test has changed. There are still some test organizations that are, have these sessions open. They're charging, well, between eight and fourteen hundred, I've seen prices for cases here. The, the difference now is the PSAT and SAT have changed completely, so the whole philosophy is there should not be a lot of test prep, as the play it always has traditionally been, necessary to assist the kids. Instead, every time you take a test, if you take the PSAT or SAT, there's a code you get when you get your results. You can go to Khan Academy, which is the online educational source, it's very, very good. You can type in that code, and that automatically gives you a set of skills you can practice related to your, your specific performance on the test. And this is what actually the, the educational establishment has designed, and they recommend as the ideal test prep for these new tests. So what we'll be doing, you know, it's one thing you can hand out the password, is we'll go ahead and go on it. We're looking for ways in the future that we can facilitate that, and, you know, a lot of students, they have someone with them, they may pay a little more attention, but if they're on their own sometimes, as human beings, we may not be fully focused all the time. But that's part that I don't know if many people are aware of yet, and we're trying to do everything we can to publicize that. It's a whole component, is they change the paradigm of the SAT testing and the preparation. We recommend not going for the SAT preps anymore. We used to conduct those in district. We now recommend signing on with the Khan Academy, and that way you'll get a specific program here specifically to your, the results of the test that you took. So, we're trying to publicize that, we're going to be doing more to publicize it, because I think that's a crucial component of that. It's not like the PARC test in the elementary school, where we have our Saturday preps and everything. This is something different that actually is recommended by the SAT, the SAT people.
I do recall that the last organized class that we had was with the 2014 graduates, and that was through the Princeton, Princeton Review, and it was of no value whatsoever when they actually took the test. The kids who actually did better, who had not taken the review, because it was not geared towards the new SAT. It was prep, it was lengthy, and it was time-consuming, and it was expensive for us, no cost to the students, but expensive for the district, and then it, it did not prove the results that we wanted to come out of it. So that was the last organized class, was 2014.
And I'm sure as Dr. Sainer will validate, you get these, these textbook series that come out, and you'll have a new version of the PARC test, and all of a sudden you're flooded with, well, this is geared for you to train your students with PARC. But then when we pulled the tests apart, we found like three questions that they changed out of the whole test. So there's so much marketing right now. Unfortunately, education in many circles has become such a business that it really, you have to look at things very, very cautiously. But the Khan Academy is, is definitely the way to go, and we're trying to find ways that we can actually promote that and make more people aware. The councils are telling the students.
Yeah.
When home in the mailing, you know, but we have to do more to get the word out, because I, I think we're reaching the students, but I'm not sure we're reaching the parents on that yet.
Did you receive in the mail as a parent to be seen?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, so it's working. Anything else, Mr.?
I think we've gotten everything.
Okay, very good. And just one more thing I wanted to say to Mr. Munoz in reference to your statement about remember who we are working for. We never forget. We never forget. This, this one hour, two hours of a board meeting here is just one night. Last week, we were out three times. The week before that was another three times with meetings. For board members that have been on the board for years, or even just new board members that have been here for two or three years, we are hours and hours into this, and again, we don't get paid a dime for this. We do this because we are the parents. Our kids have graduated this school district also. I have three kids that graduated this district and went on to be wonderful human beings. Mr. Scario, Mr. Miller, Ms. Laurie, we have all had students that... So the students that you speak of, we consider our kids. We consider our kids. I think that your sentiments really need to be echoed to the parents in the district also, that it isn't just about your kids, it's about everybody's kids. Those beautiful kids that came in tonight, part of our presentation of Hairspray, there's a little over a hundred kids with the, the crew for the stage, crew of the kids behind the scene that you don't need. And normally, the, the parents of those kids volunteer to help that, to help out with set design, construction, food, snacks, everything else. Tonight, it was two parents. Two parents, a hundred kids, two parents. When my kids were involved in the play years ago, it had dwindled down even by that point to maybe there were ten of us that spent our weekends hammering nails, making macaroni and cheese, and bringing supplies up and everything.
Painting, painting.
But we have no artistic ability.
I think so.
So, I think that's, that's definitely something, remind your community members, remind your fellow parents on the playground, that it's about all of our kids, and we all care about our kids. We watch these kids from the minute they come into preschool. We hand them their diplomas when they leave our district. Board members hand them their diplomas. We shake their hands and we look in their faces. Those kids are our kids, and we really do care about them. It's, it's why we're here. Why would we be here? Why would we be here?
This is a shower, an eye-opener. The kindergarten kids, starting in September, will be the class of 2003.
Wow. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming. Oh, Mr. Miller, you have to say something, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to say, we have a lot of data on the Mine Hill piece, we spent a lot of time. And one thing that I forgot to mention was the fact that the rate, cost per student that Mine Hill is proposing to spend on middle school is $2,000 higher than the cost to send a student to our middle school that has all the original programs, things in place.
In place already.
Already, and they're going to spend more money for inferior education, and there's no real reason for it. As long as I say that.
And Madam President, I just, I, I heard you, I heard students you don't see. I think that's what you meant, but I think the word you actually used was need, and I heard some... So just for the record, you meant students you don't see behind the scenes.
Did I say need?
Yes.
Definitely do not mean that we don't need our stage crew. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did not mean that at all.
Exactly.
It's okay, people make mistakes. Thank you for that.
And just to add on that, some of our parents who are working-class community, they work really hard and can't make it there. So, so just so...
Well, that's, there's a sign-up list. There's a sign-up list, and there were also...
And there's usually something to do.
Right, there's other opportunities they could send in food, they could send in, they could call up and order pizza to be delivered here, and they don't have to be here, or they could come and serve the food. You know, there's been other things.
Well, I'm certainly one of those parents that works two and three jobs, and I am very, very seldomly at events, so I just want to make sure that, that the public knows that we also understand that some parents just don't, can't do it.
As I said, I'm in the community. I have lived here now for 20 years, and I know the parents in the community, I know my neighbors, I know the people that my kids went to school with, so I'm fully aware of that. And when I speak of those parents, those parents still want to be involved. Our busy parents still want to be involved in the kids. So, we give them opportunities. They, they have a sign-up list, from the most minute thing to the largest thing. When they're looking for props, they're looking for costume, they put that on the list. Can you do that? It's all part of it. So when I said tonight that there were only two parents involved, that was it. No parents helped with anything. The kids, actually, tonight, there were no drinks. The kids had to buy drinks out of the machine, because the parent who volunteered to do the drinks didn't show up with the drinks. So, I am fully aware, I have three kids myself, full-time mom, ought to take care of it for many years.
That's why I bring it up, because things are hard, and I want to make sure that the public knows that you are fully aware and support all the parents, knowing that this is a generation.
Thank you very much for that. Okay.
Madam President, we're going to need to have a short executive session.
With the negotiation.
Not the committee, that's not an executive session.
It's not an executive, we're just going to, the committee is going to, right, the committee, negotiations committee, so Kim, Mr. Scario, Mrs. Laurie, and myself will meet back in the boardroom. I'll take a motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you very much, everyone, and thank you.